Before we start our meeting tonight, we're going to have an invocation and we're going to do the pledge. And the pledge tonight's going to be given by Connie. Councilwoman Connie?
I proudly declare that the United States of America and to your body for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Knox Blot from the Bible Church tonight, Woodland Bible Church. Knox, I've added another person to the list since this afternoon. We have Kenny Bennett passed away, that's our 911 director's daddy. And we have Joe Todd, a former police officer here, his family, Chet O'Neil, former police chief's brother. Kristy Prech passed away this afternoon, Kristy worked back in 911 for a time. And then we have Helen Snow Winter, she is the county council president's mother. And those are all connected, everybody's connected, but they're especially close to us, I'd like to remember them. Thank you.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you today that we have the privilege of coming to you. Thank you for our great nation, for the state of Indiana, for the city of Connersville. Thank you for these who are willing to involve themselves in our government and try to help better our city. And we're asking that you would help them as they debate and think about things and then vote and give them direction, we pray, and help. And then, Father, you know, these who have passed away, we're asking for your help for their families, the Winter family, the O'Neil family, the Bennett family, and the other two families that have been mentioned, would you be with them, we pray? And may they just sense your arms around them and your help for them. We're glad that we can look to you in every season of life. And now, once again, we're asking for your help in this meeting. Bless our mayor and our council, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Call the city council together for January 20, 2015. My first order of business, if you'll turn yourself once to the silent position or vibrate. Secondly, we'll ask the clerk treasurer to do roll call.
Councilwoman Rich?
Present.
Councilman Weber?
Present.
Councilman Shomel?
Here.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Present.
Councilman Creach?
Present.
Councilwoman Seiler?
Present.
We have six council people present, that's a quorum, we can do business. I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. No ballgame, it's just the president speaking tonight, I don't mean, that's nine o'clock, so we've got plenty of time. We have the reading of the minutes of the January 5th, 2015, regular meeting of the city council.
Make a motion to accept it as is.
Second.
A motion in second that we accept the minutes as they were printed and sent out to the council people. Any additions or corrections? None appearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thanks. And under new business today, we have a request for the storm rally, that's Rick Wright.
Good evening, mayor, council. You should have a sheet before you, that's an informational sheet on the storm for this year. And just wanted to present for a moment what storm is. This is our eighth year doing this event at the Connersville Middle School Spartan Bowl and Arena. And storm is basically a one-day youth celebration that gives an opportunity for area leaders and those interested in investing in youth, a time to celebrate with them. It's a safe, encouraging night with lots of drawl. We bring in inflatables, we bring in food, we feed them as they come in, we bring in 500 pounds of pizza as they go out, and entertainment, live music, and lots of free prizes. In 2014, we saw our 10,000 students come through storm, and also the addition of an education fair, as we had almost 10 colleges come and represent with different booths, so that their demographic could be seen and kids could have an opportunity to see what's out there as far as education goes. And it's just a night where students are off the street, they're loved, and they're given that glimpse of hope from Connersville. And we know our students need hope, and so it costs about $10 per student to put on the event. We've seen anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500 students show up. And so my request tonight is that city council consider sponsoring storm once again and sponsoring students for that event.
Thank you, we appreciate you coming tonight, I think it's a great program that you put on. What's your pleasure, council?
Um, Rick, um, this is just me. This is a wonderful program. And I know in the past, the city council, city has appropriated funds for this, and this is just me. This year, I don't see how we can fund that. We've had a financial emergency. We've had employees that were promised certain benefits that we were unable to fulfill. And I don't think, I don't think we can do it. And that's just me, I'm sorry, but I just, I don't think we can do it.
If we did, that's where would the money be coming from?
Didn't the past, it's come from the riverboat fund?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think we can help, we can get back in the river, because these is our kids, they're our future.
For clarification, we can't use the riverboat money to pay those obligations anyway, are we? But we can use it for this?
We can use it for equipment or other extracurricular activities.
I can testify, I've been to storm a couple times, it's a great event, hundreds of kids are there. It's a really good event, they're definitely there not getting on the streets and causing problems. I think it's a great opportunity, I think if we can support it, I'd be, I'd be happy to. But then I also see that we have a financial emergency in place, so I'm torn.
How much are we asking?
Any sponsorship helps the event.
How much was it last year?
Two thousand.
Two thousand. Thank you.
I think it's a great thing, and I, and I think I said in the past that I appreciate you coming and you make a very good presentation. But also, in the past, we, I've also said that, you know, any group can come, and we just, we can't say yes to everybody, and I think, especially in the position that we're in, I think we'll just take a lot of flack if we just hand out money, unfortunately. That's where I stand.
Other comments? Debbie, I didn't hear from you.
I think it's very difficult to give to one and not give to everybody, and we are in a financial emergency, I don't know how we can do it.
Does anybody else come in and ask?
No, we just started the year about two weeks ago.
That's true, you're the first one, so yeah. Fine with it. Okay, here we go. Don't come in, this is it.
Anybody in the audience want to comment on this issue? I don't know if there were other people there.
Well, that's why I think, even if the city doesn't support the storm this year, I think it's a great organization to support. So my wife and I talked it over tonight, I've got a little donation for you. So I think that is where we can really help out, is if we give ourselves and our community members give. So, you know, I hope we can support it, if we can't, I hope we choose to as individuals support this event, because it is a good cause, and many lives are touched.
Again, I just had to bring up the fact that that's what the riverboat money's for. And you don't have to say yes to everybody, but proven, proven activities like this that have shown their worth deserve our money. And I mean, if you have the money, which we do in the riverboat fund, and we can't use it for the other things, I mean, it's, to me, it's a no-brainer, so I support you.
You want to put some form of motion, see if we can get this done?
Well, I'll make the motion to support it with your riverboat money.
To what?
I would say $2,000. How much is in the riverboat money?
There's $143,000, but some of that's committed.
But not a great deal of it. $40,000, is it?
Probably close to $40,000.
So we have $100,000, so we're okay?
I will second the motion.
Now we have $98,000, I think we're okay.
Can you tell me exactly what's in the riverboat?
$143,000.
And how much have we?
There's, I think about $30,000 obligated.
And it's for?
Housing demolition, $12,300 for the, that's our match on that grant. Almost $4,000 for the housing grant. $14,000 other contractual services, and we can't figure what that's for, I'm sorry. The police, we just paid out the tasers.
So approximately, what's the balance?
About?
About $100.
Yeah, around $100,000, maybe $110,000.
When's our next draw?
Until August.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, everybody's got to speak, unless you are burning to speak again. Are you ready for that question? I'll have a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Rich?
No.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
No.
Councilwoman Seiler?
Yes.
Four yes, three no, or two no, I guess. Two no, we only had six people here. Of course, we'll have to, that's just to advertise for an additional appropriation. Public hearing will be at the next meeting, so.
It passed, I know what you're doing. The system is now, we have to advertise for a public hearing to use that money on the riverboat. We have a public hearing at the next meeting, and then the council will get to vote after the public meeting. Okay, so you probably want to be back here on?
February 2nd.
February 2nd, okay?
Thank you very much, thank you for the time, and thank you for the donations already.
Okay, thank you for coming.
I just encourage everybody to donate personally, I mean, this is a great cause, I mean, it really is, so if you can donate, please do.
We have an outstanding check that was not cash, 11-5-6-3, I'd like to put it back in the bank. I need a motion to do that.
Second.
Motion in a second that we take this outstanding check and put it back in the fund. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried, that's a done deal. Okay, we have resolution 2015-02, this is police and fire reimbursement. We had some money come back from the police on telephone, and we had some first aid unit money come back on uniforms, $40, I'd like to put that money back in. Resolution 2015-03, again, is reimbursement, first aid uniforms, 131-22, and cable TV, telephone, 49-02. All this is money coming back, I'd like to take them both together if you would.
So, motion?
Second.
Motion in a second that we adopt resolution 2015-02 and 2015-03, all money coming back. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Pending ordinance 3175. This is a, replace a section of the floor plan, or the floodplain.
Floodplain! Hey! That's about where you're trying to read your mind on this.
Floodplain, we have to have this done by the 19th of February, and this was adopted by the area planning last Monday night, and it takes us ratifying it.
As a unanimous favorable recommendation, it's the floodplain regulations are already in place, but to go along with the new maps, we're required to actually adopt the new language. Substance, there is no difference, the only real difference is some of the definitions, they've changed some definitions, they've dropped some, and then they've added some other definitions. And the whole thing with this floodplain district regulations, it's part of the deal that's made in order to, the communities take part in the theme with the flood insurance program. So the only way to get the subsidized flood insurance, and if anybody has a floodplain to, with a mortgage, it's required under federal law to have it, so anybody that has a mortgage has to have this if it's a floodplain. So there is any questions?
And if we don't have this, then there's no federal insurance.
Correct.
We're trying to short time get it done.
As I have things ready, the county commissioners, they passed today, and as soon as I can get, then get the copy from the city with my signed copies, and the signed copy from the state, I can send those up to them, so I should have those up to the state then at the end of the week, with your ordinance numbers and all the signature pages.
Any further? I'll take the motion on.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to accept pending ordinance 3175.
Second.
Got a motion in a second that we adopt this ordinance, it being ordinance 3175. Any discussion? Anybody out there have a burning discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final reading?
Second.
On such suspension of rules only, to consider pending ordinance 3175 on third and final reading, on suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. You may go ahead and move to third and final reading on pending ordinance 3175, if you like.
Some of it.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to consider pending ordinance 3175 on third and final reading, replacing a section of the floodplain, floodplain district with the new plan. I think that's as simple as we can get it. Roll call.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seiler?
Yes.
At third reading, you adopted that. We have a like ordinance, this is the overlay of the airport, all of you have this in front of you tonight, looks like this, for the audience, looks like this. And basically, what that is, is we're asked to adopt that, and any zoning issue that comes up inside that red would have to go to the FAA for approval. I think some of you were here, Mr. Nobby, you're on the board, so you understand.
Yeah, it looks like, it makes sense, it protects our airport from approachment and protects a large number of grants that we've already got in place, and future grants, so it makes sense, I voted for it with a favorable, I think it was 100% favorable recommendation.
Yeah, we have a favorable recommendation by the area planning.
And it's the, and really what it's doing is, it's at a local level, is we are just adopting the same type of protected airspaces that the FAA has, but what this does is by us having that level of review on this at the local level, it's meant for us to avoid the, oops, that thing shouldn't have been built there, that type of thing.
Instead of everything having to come before the board, Bill has a tool now, he can look, when he has a proposition for something to be built in this area, he can go directly online, look it up, it tells him if it has to be recorded or not recorded, and it saves tons of paperwork and a lot of time. If it needs to be reported, if it's filed 7464, the FAA will make a decision if it's good or bad, and it will be final.
This is a long process working on that. Started out as, there's a lot of extra procedure in it, and it was a lot of work then to get a lot of this extra procedures out.
Four years.
Yeah, so we were working it for quite a while. And I, there's a little bit of a hiatus on it, is after I didn't have anybody else in the office with me, when I, it's like no longer in the building, it's back there. So as requested with the airport is to go ahead and then pick up where we were at the land, you know, about two years ago.
The FAA has been on us for some time to get local ordinance backing on their airspace. It's still federal airspace, but they're, they don't want to be bothered with everybody and his brother contacting them and saying, well, can I build here, or can I do this, or can I do that? So what it comes down to is now that it's on a local level, and Bill will be able to filter these things out, and we won't be calling the FAA every day, every time somebody wants to build a barn someplace. And it's part of what they want us to do, to continue with our grants. They want the airport protected, because that, I think I've said it a million times, they've got $11 million in that airport up there since 1992. They don't want that airport to become landlocked or to lose the ILS, any of the instrument approaches we have, any of the world augmentation approaches, GPS we have, this will protect all of that.
Pending ordinance 3176, this is a zoning code amendment sent to us by the area planning, again, favorable recommendation, it requires that the city council adopt it, and any further discussion?
Are you ready for a motion?
I am.
I would like to make a motion, we pass pending ordinance 3176.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to pass pending ordinance 3176 on first reading. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Would you like to suspend the rules and move forward?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules so we can consider pending ordinance 3176 on third and final reading, on suspension of rules, all in, all in favor, say aye. Is there any opposed? Motion carried, you may move.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second that we consider pending ordinance 3176, the change in the zoning code, airport overlay protection district. This is on third reading, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Any questions? Anybody, any out there? None appearing, roll call vote.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seiler?
Yes.
Yeah, pass that, thank you so much. We'll move into department reports.
Thank you.
For the month of December 2014, and the annual report for the year 2014. Jean, you want to just go ahead while you're there?
I'm sorry, sorry.
Year report.
Ah, I gave my report, most of it in?
He did this in December.
December 15th for the year. The construction's still going on at the airport, on the terminal building, we ran into an asbestos problem, 26, about, it's going to be between 15 and 25,000 dollars worth of problem. FAA said they'll pick it up, so that's being on a good challenge with them, so that's one thing out of the way. That's going to be remediated between now and February 2nd, we're going to have special people come in and get the asbestos out and dispose of it. Other than that, we're moving right along, and they're working every day. We hope to have it done within the next 75 days. Then, we'll start on the ramp. And that, the ramp will be $1,168,000. We've already got the grant, and we're just waiting on the weather to break, and it'll fly into that, and then by, about September, we'll have a brand-new ramp with a brand-new six-inch cap on it. And then we're going to start next year on a runway, rehabbing it, strengthening and resurfacing.
Thank you, Jean.
Thanks.
EEG director, I think he's not going to be here tonight. EMS.
Okay, for the month of December, for the city share, our expenses was $82,853.91, our receipts was $18,083.42, for a total of $64,7049. Our total runs for the, that month was 226. For the year, the city share was $631,943.51, our receipts was $195,706.62, for a total of $436.236.89, and we did 2,490 runs for the year. Any questions?
Is it up a little bit? The expenses?
Yeah, it's up a little bit, yeah. Which would also add the new ambulance in there.
Which, but we had money for that, you have to remember, the expenses there, but there was also cash to pay for.
It came back through the Medicaid reimbursement.
Reimbursed, oh, we received.
How's that doing, now the new one?
Pretty good, we've got a few minor things where it's got a thermostat in the back acting up, and they fixed it, and so far, it's working.
It's a good thing.
But as far as the chassis, it's working great. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Clark, Suren, Danan, Jesse.
All right, in the front of your packet, we have 2014 year review, some of the highlights for 2014, for our programs, for our spring and fall soccer, and we've had, I think, the most kids this year, especially in fall, around 325 total. We also had a lot of teams in our church softball league, our 14, we worked on the girls softball 10-and-under, and half of the T-ball league, which will be changing this year, so we'll see improvements on that. And then all of our other regular leagues, we also added to the pavilion, did the inside work to match the outside, and we also built a new barn behind the parkhouse, so that's really nice to have, to store all of our mowers and equipment and everything like that.
I'd like to add in that the Lions got paid for all of it, Terry, for the pavilion renovation inside on walls, we had done the ceiling, but we did the walls this time.
For 2015, we hope to put a bathroom with a red cross building, that'll increase our revenue on that a little bit, and also get rid of the porta potty that's out back, so. See what else.
And we'll, we'll be doing that, I will make all these things clear, because we're spending money. We have a grant for a private will that we're going to do the bathroom in the building, and the siding on the front of that is gray vinyl, it's got four holes, it looks bad. I'm going to try to lay stone on that, when we lay stone underneath the bridge, and that's going to come from the grant, too. So there'll be no tax money going in that, into these programs that we're talking about.
Also in here is a monthly report for December. Revenue was around $9,984, which brings the year-to-date up to $219,000, which, that's all broken down in your yearly report as well. Right now, we're still just repairing picnic tables, I think the guys said they've done up to about 41 so far, and they've got a few more to go. We're continuing to cutting down trees, trim trees, they did one today, so maybe do another one tomorrow, we'll probably work on taking some stuff down. Right now, we also have indoor soccer league signups for 7th through 12th grade. Currently, we have the younger kids, their league's going on right now, but the older kids, we wait till spring so they can participate. Expenditures for this month were $58,186, those, of course, went up because of longevity pay and other stuff that goes along with it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For our December monthly report, we had 785 law reports, 43 violations, two ordinance violations, 12 warnings, six personal interactions, 38 property damages, early fatalities, and 76 arrests. And for the annual report, we had $11,722 law incident reports, 637 for the whole year, 10 ordinance violations, 960 warnings, 73 personal injury, 549 property damage, two fatalities, and 1,098 people arrested. And of course, both of my years, both on the expenditures are the same, both because of the way it's laid out, but we've got the December's in there and also the yearly.
Questions? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Street Department.
As you can see, you have the monthly and the yearly, kind of go hand-in-hand. Something I would like to start, which I have started, and some of you've mentioned it to me before, too, is the amount of people, I'm walking and looking for the streetlights out. So I'd like for people to call, and if you have something and I don't see it, I like to make a list and compile and mark off as, as are fixed. This lady a few weeks ago called and thanked us for fixing it, called today and said it's out again. So, so it's hard to keep up with every light in town, but I know of about 14 or 15 real quick ones, and I'm starting to put?
ones, and I'm starting to put, you know, grip it around the bottom of them so I can mark them and remember, because a lot of the metal poles don't have tags on them, so you don't know what they are for sure, we've got four on the fill that are out, and we're in the process of getting those fixed, so, if you residents has got one, please call us, we'll try to get you on, we will get you on this and get them fixed as soon as we can, because it is an ongoing thing, and I know there's several out, any questions with what you have in front of you?
No, I do have a question, I'm not sure if it's for you or utilities, on Third Street, that water main break over by subway, there's a big hole there.
It's taken care of.
Oh, as of when?
As of yesterday.
It's back.
It's not as bad.
It's not as bad, but it's back, it's not, not nearly as bad, but it's definitely a pretty big hole over there, I know it's probably because it's cold, but it was pretty significant, I think, two days ago, and then-
Yeah, it was.
Today, today it's still there, I mean, I'm not sure what we can do at this point.
We talked to Mike about it Monday, you know, we tried to address it the best we could on Monday.
Yeah, so I don't know if you can put some more hot pack in or whatever.
It was a pretty good-sized hole.
Yeah, it's a big hole.
Big hole and deep.
A lot of it was froze when we took it out, it's still in there, sadly.
We were lucky that night, too, we ended up on the state highway, helping us with the sand and salt on the road up there, too, so that was a big help to us.
Yeah, it was a mess, I'm sure, it was a mess.
But we're out patching, since it was warm today, we're patching today and probably tomorrow, and trying to keep up the streets that way the best we can, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Tell these. Those of you that have been on the council before, this is a whole new utility report, and I commend them today on the, on the report, it's easy to read, it's very explanatory, and everything's in it, plus a budget on the backside, so.
Yeah, it is, I feel after the seven years I've been on council, this is an awesome report, and I thank the utilities.
Okay, thanks, I owe a lot of help, I'm stashed in Gladso.
Thank you.
Hope you got a chance to look at it, I'll just go over it real quick, page three is our utility staffing of all the different buildings within the utilities, union and non-union, if you're interested in that.
Yeah, I mean-
Page five is the MS four program, what it's all about, and like I told Board of Works, they, all this stuff's thrown around a lot, and MS four, well ahead, pre-treatment, and don't really know what the heck it's all about, so I tried to put a little bit of what MS four means, page seven, six and seven is department highlights, and on the bottom of page seven is another, talks about our pre-treatment program, was Erin Johnson, kind of what she does, and eight and nine, just a detailed listing of all the work orders two thousand fourteen, we have a total of one thousand nine hundred and sixty work orders, and there's a December report in there, too, if we had fifty-one work orders in December, then your mileage report, the highlighted vehicles, is the vehicles that's not in use now, have gotten rid of, traded, as I told Board of Works, if you're bored, you can probably look over that, then your, our regular reports, our overtime report for the year, we spent one hundred and seven thousand dollars in overtime in two thousand fourteen, hopefully, we cut that down a little bit, but a lot of this stuff is pretty much first walk and last run.
Remember, we had authorized overtime because we put all the meters in, over seven hundred.
If you look at the graph, that little spike, put in the years.
And then, of course, when a pipe breaks, sometimes we gotta fix it at night, we don't have any choice, we gotta fix it on Sunday, wherever it is.
We're off to a very good start this year, then our revenue, our ending balance for water, sewer, stormwater, revenue for the year, and our disbursements is also listed. Page sixteen, I kind of had it at the last minute, just kind of list our estimated cost and timeframe of all those stormwater projects, like I said, they're just estimated, but at least give a timeframe and, and, you know, the total amounts would be about fourteen million dollars, our stormwater fees, not gonna quite cover that, I think about three million dollars short, so, they just, for information, see the timeframe of all these projects that's coming up, and like Mayor said, the remaining is estimated budget that we're gonna try to follow, you know, like I told Board of Works, this report was good for me to do, and learn, and learn a lot with this report, and the budget will probably change throughout the year, the more we get into it, I can now look at two thousand fourteen numbers completely, and go from there, any questions?
Excellent report, Mike, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions, anybody out there have any questions? Transfer station, you all have that in your hand, Mr. Creach?
Yeah, and I handed, I put the year report in front of everyone for the meeting start, if anybody has any questions, I can't give the numbers on the year end, two thousand fourteen, we disposed of seven thousand three hundred and twenty-three tons of waste, five hundred and two tons of recycling, we had an income of one hundred and five thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars, and we served seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight customers.
I'm a little upset with your overtime, whether or not I can handle it.
Pardon me?
I'm a little upset with your overtime, but other than that, I can handle it.
I apologize.
Did you notice his overtime was zero?
Totally too high.
In the month of December, we had one hundred and ten runs, seventy-six hours of emergencies, thirteen hours on inspections, eight investigations, behind three plans, seventy-one hours in training, eleven hundred and seventy runs for the year, thirty-six thousand dollar worth of damage for the year, I mean, for the month of December. See what else we can have to overcome. Thousand dollars FLSA for the month of December. Any questions?
Good report, go ahead and see your overtime down.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Clark.
Thank you, sir.
City TV will not have a report, he's up doing the ballgame, Fran left, the president of the council, wanted me to read this after the reports were in tonight, he did his own calculating for two thousand fourteen, and he wanted me to read this, police, fire, and street department, the police in the month of December spent a hundred and ninety thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents, fire spent two hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents, street department a hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars. Police, for the entire year, was two million four hundred and thirty-nine dollars, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-two cents, fire was two million three hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty cents, I think what Fran is trying to show the council is, it takes almost all the tax money to pay those two entities, those are the three biggest that we have, the fork is much smaller, and transfer and all those, so by watching our Ps and Qs, we've been able to do it, you have a sheet here in front of you with the yellow line on top, okay, on March the sixth, we initiated the financial emergency, everybody find this, I passed it out, yellow line, March the sixth, I passed it out, if you'll go down in the mayor's office, we were able to cut eight percent off our budget, clerk treasure had an addition of four percent, only because she had a person go from a single pay insurance to a family plan, legal took twenty percent, you're to be commended, John, off your budget, city hall took forty percent off, council knocked twenty percent off, first aid up twelve, why, because we had to buy a new ambulance, had to buy a couple defibrillators, I think, or one, that's really commendable, that we could be a plus twelve after what we had to go through with the chassis and the whole deal, only because we were able to get that Medicaid money, thanks to the clerk treasure, police were down fourteen point five percent in their spending, fire was down eleven point five percent in their spending, DOT was down eleven percent, landfill was down three percent, total overall, nine point five percent, almost ten percent, we lowered it since the financial emergency, now, when you lower a budget like we've got of ten percent, you're talking seven hundred thousand dollars, that's a, that's a good deal, I told Julie and the council and the Board of Works, let's stay the course, let's, let's keep solvent, let's keep going, it's not fun, but what we are able to do is, we're able to provide all the services to our people and not have to cut services, and we haven't had to lay anybody off, any comments on the spending?
Can you tell how much, how many percent it is that is reduced because of the clothing allowance?
Um, it's about eighty thousand dollars.
I think it's about ninety total.
And about percentage-wise per department, do we know that figure, is it like half of that savings, or is it?
No, no, no.
A fractional percent?
The majority of this comes from overtime, in two thousand seven, we spent a quarter of a million dollars in overtime, if that tells you anything, and it's been going down ever since, but since we stopped it completely, and the reason that, everybody said, well, what about this clothing allowance, the reason we did that is because we knew just cutting overtime and other things wasn't quite gonna make it, and we looked at the whole picture, and the whole picture, you had that ninety thousand, that's another, basically a hundred thousand, that brought us over the, over the hump, we're looking at, as you, I told you last time, probably having three hundred and fifty thousand at the end of May, if the estimates are all right, if we're close, we'll look at it again, as soon as we get through May, and we get our tax draw in June, we will certainly look at this again, and probably produce another one of these sheets to see where we are, but I think it's just like at home, if you, one of, you have two people working in the home, and you get only one person's working, or you get your hours cut, or you go to a new job, you don't make as much, you gotta kind of calculate where you're gonna stop spending, and in, in most places, you would probably eliminate the things you don't need, maybe going out to eat, going to the movie, buying a new car, try to get by with what you caught, that's basically what the city's doing, we're trying to get rid of the things, I shouldn't say get rid of, that's a bad word, we should, we're trying to not spend on the things we can get by with, the least intrusive on our people is overtime and clothing allowance, layoffs would be very intrusive, somebody would not be able to pay their car payment, their house payment, and I don't know where else you could go with it, if you have any ideas, I'm certainly willing to listen, but it's working, I can tell you that, it's working to the tune of eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, how long do we have to stay in it, I wish I had that answer, you have the answer?
I'm afraid I don't.
Okay, you're the money person, okay, I do want to make one thing perfectly clear tonight, somebody suggested in the paper that the city be audited, the city's audited every year, Julie's audited, the audit is on the internet, you can go back as far as, I think, seven years, and read the audit on the internet about the city, we go to an exit conference every year, we sit in the room with the auditor, and the auditor tells us if there's anything wrong, and I can tell you this, we have had a perfect audit for seven years, the only exception was, we called something, one thing, and the auditor wanted to call it something else, what was it, I can't remember, it was some federal grant that we got, we called it something, and the auditor said we should call it something else, but it was not financial.
Yeah.
Now, I'm telling you, that was a perfect audit, and you can go on there and look, I'm not, I'm not telling you, so if you, the word audit comes out, just get, get on the internet and look at it, I wanna, I didn't make an appointment for the airport board last time, because I had four people that had contacted me that wanted to be on the airport board, I interviewed these people, I talked with them, and I wish I could put all four on there, I wish we could have eight, because they're very interested in the airport, they'd love to work on it, but I'm only allowed to put one additional, one federal law and state law, so I'm naming tonight Andy Yarian, Dr. Yarian, he is a young man that grew up here, went to college, came back, as you know, I have Dr. right over here, he is very interested in the airport, he's been studying it, he, he is, he represent, and I'm not picking on your gene, but Gene's my age or older, Pete's almost my age, the other two guys on the airport are about my age, Andy's probably in his thirties, and I want to see some young people coming in, and that was one of my big reasons for putting him on there, I think that he'll be a great member, and I think he'll begin to learn about the airport, I think he'll be an asset to city Connerville, the other people that were there were, were great people, too, one of the individuals wanted to be on the airport board and consider starting a flying school, well, FAA won't let you have any business at the airport if you're on the airport board, so I kind of left that out, the other one was already serving on a board and was being paid, Mr. Baker says you can't serve two boards and be paid, so I kind of got it down, and then because of his aggressiveness, he's done a great job in Connerville, so he's gonna be your new member, you're gonna have to contact, tell him when, I told him it was on Monday, and I told him when, it was noon, but I didn't know what Monday.
Next Monday.
Last Monday of the month.
Okay, I appreciate you stopping over and greeting and welcoming.
Am I appointed?
Gene.
Yeah, and I appointed Gene Worley to be the regular member, and I shouldn't say that, because both your terms will end in four years, his is for four, and somebody asked me today, said, well, now you've got two people expiring, you have to, when you got five people, there's gonna be two expired for, in one year, and then one each year, okay?
Yeah, I was just talking to Mr. Baker down there, the, they amended the code eight twenty-two dash two dash one in two thousand twelve, they added section G, which makes it feasible for communities our size to add that fifth member.
I think it's an asset to the airport.
It will be, I'm looking forward to that.
And, so anyway, I hope you all agree with me, you allowed me to do it, and my reasoning may not be the best, but I, I thought it was the thing to start, try to get some young people, us old gray-haired people, we've got a few blondes.
Be nice.
I want a couple so far.
You want equal time, you got all dark hair and whiskers.
I got gray whiskers.
I think that's all I've got, I think we're ready for old business, anybody, old business, we have anything hung over, miscellaneous business, you got anything, Ruby?
No, all I can say is Robert Gilbert is having his ninety-ninth birthday, and I wish him a happy birthday from the city.
Absolutely. We all did.
That's why I said the city.
We, I think we fixed that hole out in front of your house today, did we?
Make your part.
We fixed that hole in the new road.
I don't know what you fixed, but I sure had a lot of salt in my driveway.
Salt?
Today, I don't know how it got there, but-
It wasn't as we backed holes off.
I know, you said, yeah.
I think Ruby dropped a bag out there or something.
I don't know, I think somebody pulled in and backed up and decided to take off, they left the load.
Well, anyway, we, we did fix that hole in front, out there, there was a little hole like that, and I didn't want it to get started.
Yeah.
You've got anything?
I do, I had a gentleman that lives on Grand Avenue, and he asked me to bring this up, and I told him I would, at Twenty-first and Graham, we have a stoplight, he's, he asked me if I would bring it to council and consider it, when the storm project is completed, if we would make that a flasher north and south, and red flash east and west, so I brought it up. You had any thought on that day?
What's he want?
The, eliminate the stoplight there, he just asked me to bring it up, the stoplight.
That will have to be a study later on, because-
Well, I just, no, it's-
That's a pretty busy intersection.
Well, and it's gonna be, what, a year and a half before that project is completed, you know, I, I just wanted to bring it up, and he asked me if I would, and I told him I would, and that's all that matters.
Would you bring that up when the project's done?
I will be here when the project's done.
They'll leave something for the next people to-
There you go.
I don't have anything.
Nothing at all?
Nothing at all.
You have anything, Dave?
Yeah, the, the utilities guys are out there working, that water main breakover at subway, I just gotta commend those guys, because it was cold, and it was, it was really cold that, that day, and there was water everywhere, and I just gotta tip my hat, and they, they worked really hard at it, and, well, I, I wouldn't want to be out there, because it was nasty.
I'll, I'll give you a couple clues, they, I think they clocked out the last ones at four-thirty in the morning, didn't they?
Yeah, they were out there a long time.
And, let me tell you about our two bosses over here, they were out there all night, too, but they took turns, but they, they were there, one of them was on, one of them was on the job all the time, I drove by. I drove by.
Yeah. If you don't remember, it was one of the coldest days we had. It was, it was nasty, nasty day. So I just got to commend you guys. Great job.
They told us today at Board of Works, it came in a little cheaper than, you know, that was a big pipe and the way they talk, they had to fix it hot, which means pressure. That's, that's a bad deal. Yeah, they, they do a pretty good job. Don't, don't say too many nice things of being wanting a raise. You have anything to say for yourself? I got to give you equal time.
Let me go back to the raise part.
You have anything on the miscellaneous?
Well, you have a question. Are you doing anything with a certain company that's wanting to expand?
Yes.
Is that, are you, are you working that out?
We're working it out.
Okay, thank you.
On the north end of town?
Yes.
We are working, because we have been working for three years.
Yeah, definitely. That's hot mess. Okay. I just want to make sure because I've had a couple people ask me about that and I.
I think there's a meeting here today or tomorrow, next day.
Okay, thank you.
In fact, I've been working with Gene on that project. We're doing everything we can, are we not?
Keep going.
Connie, I missed you.
No.
Kind of got engaged. No? She wanted me to bring that up.
Would that be old business or miscellaneous?
I don't know what it is. It's business. Congratulations, Connie.
He could have come here and done that on TV. You know how they do it up on a mountain and they do it in a boat and on a ladder and at the fair, on the merry-go-round? He could have been at city council.
He wanted to, I'm sure.
Did he? I know why he couldn't. He just couldn't wait.
He couldn't? Look at him.
Public forum. Ruby, you're not out there, so.
Sorry. Sorry about it.
Public forum. No public.
We don't have any public.
You want to go out there and tell us something, Ruby?
Employees. Everybody here works for this city.
Nothing on the public forum?
I do think if people need, you know, if they're guarding planes, come to the city meetings.
Good idea. John, we missed you. Have you got anything you want to talk about?
Well, now that you have. Let's see, we have two hours. No. I'm ready to go home and get stubborn.
Now, he eats late. You going to watch the president?
Sure.
Anything else to become before the council tonight? Not only entertain a motion to adjourn. Did you have anything, Clerk Tre-? I never did ask you. You're a woman, a few words.
Dave, don't you say a word.
I'll take a bullshit to adjourn.
Come in.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Me and the jury.